To the Highland County Council Early Work session. Today is April the 12th and it is 6:00 PM. Look at that clock over there because it says 5:00.
It's five o'clock somewhere.
It is five o'clock somewhere. Receive a presentation and discuss fees and ordinance updates relating to animal control. And who's doing that?
I don't know.
Start it up.
Okay. Chief? Chief Stewart. Perfect.
Thank you for letting us be here tonight with North Carolina patient. Chief Rhyme couldn't make it tonight. He was kind of down in Galveston at the Texas Police Chiefs Conference. We're actually receiving an award there at the conference for our Texas fallen bike race and the money that we raised for all officers of the state. Also, we're also receiving our re-accreditation from the Texas Police Chiefs Association, which we've been accredited by then since 2009. So it's kind of a double presentation that they're receiving down there. Otherwise, he would have been here for the presentation, but he's been meeting me and Wes tonight. What we're going to be covering is the animal services fees and some proposed ordinance updates. We're going to review the animal service fees for any potential adjustments. We're going to look at adding the animal service fees to the city master fee schedule. Also, look at potentially updating our animal ordinance to allow for fees to be reduced or waived by the city manager. To look at also possibly changing wording in the ordinance from birds to fowl. Allow for an infected neighbor written permission exception on coop business. We're going to also address any other additional considerations council may have. We'll go into more detail, much details won on these as we go along or not. As you know, the city did a total rewrite on the animal control ordinance back in, past in September. In the old ordinance, the amount of fees were established in that ordinance. Under the new ordinance that got passed, the fees were said to be identified in the city master fee schedule. That never happened. We never adopted the fees in the city master fee schedule. So that's what we want to do now. It also gives us a great opportunity to look at the fees that we had charged in the past, which actually had been in effect since 1999, so they haven't been reviewed in a long time. Gives us a chance to review them for adequacy and also whether we want to keep it simple or tier our fees or whatever you want to do. This section here is part of the new ordinance. And as you see, it talks about all the different types of fees that can be charged. And at the bottom, it says the city council may authorize the city manager from time to time by resolution to reduce, refund, or waive the fees in this chapter. There's also additional fees that are authorized in the animal control ordinance that are not listed here. And Chief had talked with Mr. Loughlin earlier, and that's apparently not a problem as long as the fee is mentioned in the ordinance, we can put it in the master fee schedule. So this list right here may not be an all-inclusive list of all the fees that are identified in the ordinance, if that makes sense. Just a reminder, now we are talking about fees and not fines because there is a difference. These are just fees that recoup our cost of doing business. It's not meant as a punitive action. As the slide says there, we're just recouping our cost to provide this service. Usually, whatever fees get charged so far below what our actual cost is, that it really doesn't come near covering the entire cost. Here's the big list of our fees. And we did a comparison of surrounding cities and also other cities that are similar to our size. You should have a copy of this slide in front of you. I'd be handy to refer back to that later on. Once we go over this list, I'm going to hand it over to Animal Control Officer Wes Fittis. And he's going to go under each one of these fees in detail and have a discussion. If you have any questions on what exactly that fee covers and what services he provides and provide this service, we can address those at the time. But as you see, the far left corner is our current fees that were adopted back in 1999. Our right corner is proposed fees. Now, these proposed fees were just something that we came up with, the police department and talking with Wes and looking at some of the other fees. It's not, it's definitely open for discussion. As you can see, there's a couple of different things on the adoption fees. It's kind of tiered. That's kind of a complicated way of doing it. A lot of cities are just charging one fee. So we just kind of need direction from council on what they feel we should be doing. Obviously, some of the adoption fees, depending on what type of animal comes in, we have to have less cost to, plus if the animal's already vaccinated and sterilized, then we don't have to provide that service to the animal to get it adopted. But anyway, we have adoption fees, impound fees, boarding fees, deceased animal removal, euthanasia fees, excess animal permits, exotic animal registrations, dangerous dog registrations, trap permit fees, owner surrender fees, rabies quarantine fees, rabies specimen testing, rabies vaccination, cordyne vaccination, which is the kennel cough, flea treatment, and veterinary bills. So we have a list of proposed fees. And then across the top, like I said, the other cities and when they last updated their fee schedule. So with that, we'll go right into the adoption fees and I'll turn it over to Wes.
So my name's Wes. I'm the animal control officer for the city. I'm going to go over a little more detail, the specific fees. If you guys have any questions, just stop me, ask, I'll do my best to answer.
Question up front. Why the column for flower mound? Either no data or a lot of zeros. Do they adopt the center or do they not publish?
So they either don't have the fees listed or they weren't provided at the time that we requested. All right, so our adoption fee, it's currently $100. It's been waived for, at least since I've been here. I've been here, went on eight years. Low or no cost adoptions is desirable to reducing crowding in the shelter. It's definitely, it's a plus for us when people come in and they go, oh, it doesn't cost anything to adopt. It makes us more desirable and it gets more traffic into the shelter. What we're proposing going to is a tiered structure. And to touch again on what Chief Stewart said, it's based on how much we have to put into the animal. So an animal that is sterilized and vaccinated, we would charge $100 for the adoption. The animal that is sterilized but not vaccinated would be 80. An un-sterilized but vaccinated animal would be 40. And an un-sterilized, unvaccinated animal would be 20. How do you tell if they're vaccinated or not? So that would be if someone surrenders an animal and they have the medical records for it showing that it's been vaccinated. Or if we provide the vaccine when the animal was with us. If I took it over to the clinic and got it a rabies vaccine and then we place it up for adoption, now we know it's vaccinated. That's a cost we put into it. Just for reference, in 2020, we had 86 animal adoptions. And in 2021, we had 67 animal adoption.
I have a question. Were any of those repeats, same animal? Because 2020 is COVID year, right? So I'm sure.
Well, these are fiscal years. These aren't calendar years. We do get some adoption returns occasionally. I can get you that specific information if you'd like it.
Just curious if it happens.
Very rarely. It'd be a handful.
So why have we waived fees for eight years?
As an attempt to get people to come in. It makes us more desirable.
But if we're waiving, what do you think adding fees is going to do? I mean, is that going to?
Well, that kind of goes back, actually, your question on flower mound, they have no fee for adoptions. It's no cost.
They just want to move them.
Yeah. But the one provision on the ordinance update we're going to ask for is the ability for the city manager to authorize any of those fees to be waived to help us to be competitive and especially in the adoption category. So even though we'll have a set fee, it may be that we continue to waive it just like we have been doing for the past eight years.
I mean, we pay for sterilization, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree. I think we need to at least cover our costs.
What other cost do you have associated with this? If it's un-sterilized and unvaccinated, other than those two costs, what other cost do you have?
It would just be the housing and the materials to keep the animal as well as time placed into caring for the animals.
It's a heck of a lot cheaper, paying a fee is a heck of a lot cheaper than going to PetSmart and adopting a pet from PetSmart or any other adoption agency. So I agree with John. I think there should be at least some fee to cover the cost.
Any other questions? Our impound fee currently applies to all animals impounded at the city animal shelter. It's your, what's currently there is $30 for your first impound. And then every time an animal is impounded, after that, it's an additional $10. So if I pick your dog up three times, it's $50 for the impound. If I pick your dog up once, it's 30. What we're proposing to go to is a $25 impound fee with no subsequent increase. There's no additional cost for me to go out and pick a dog up five, six, seven times.
So you're going to charge $25 every time? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, every time an animal is impounded, $25.
Do you still require shipping, like if the owner comes back?
It's not required, but it is offered. We can't force someone to microchip their animal. For information, 2020, we had 128 impounds. And in 2021, we had 83 impounds.
Well, to make that more understandable, the frequent flyers down below would have been a good number to add. You know, how many of those impounds?
Will they occur in multiples? I would say, I can get you that information.
Okay, I mean, because if it's done, then that's fine. But if we have serial offenders.
Well, again, this is, this is meant to be a fee, not a fine.
I understand, I understand. But I mean, maybe if you have, same person's dog keeps getting out, maybe it should be a fine and not just a fee.
And that, that is an option. I do have the authority to issue citations.
I mean, I get there's accidents, fence blow over, but I mean, if, you know, if somebody, you caught the same dog five times, there's a problem somewhere. Well, and also you catch a dog that doesn't have a collar on it. So dogs are supposed to be leashed or collared with the, with tags. I was guilty of that five years ago, so I know the game. Our dog did not have on a collar, did not have tags. And so we were told before we could take our dog back, we had to have it chipped. That's why I asked about the chipped. So I agree, there should be a fine.
Any other questions? Daily boarding fee. This applies to all privately owned animals impounded at the city shelter. Currently, it's $11.50 a day. To your question earlier, it's, you know, kennel service time, food, water, litter supplies, you know, the staff's time, that's the other fee associated with that. And boarding is charged starting after the day of impound. So if I pick it up today, it's $25. Starting tomorrow, your charge for boarding going forward per day. What we're proposing is a $15 a day fee. You can see that most local private boarding facilities charge anywhere from $36 to $52 a day. Our other areas that we compared on that chart range between $5 and $15 a day for boarding.
I recommend you go to at least what medical, animal medical center for charts. No, I mean, if the people, there's got to be an incentive to come and get the dog too. The dog is in, so don't make it, you know, for 15 bucks a day, I'll turn the dog loose and I'll come and get it after vacation.
It's going to be real expensive when I start writing the tickets for it.
No, no, but I'm just saying, you know, don't, don't make it. We don't want to be punitive, but the other side of it is, is.
Do you have people?
Is this a real problem? I mean, is this a serious problem as far as you're having to board, board dogs?
I would say the vast majority of people pick up their animal within a day or two. It's only the, it's usually no, hey, we were on vacation and the pet sitter let the dog out is why it takes four or five days to claim an animal. Because if an animal is not, doesn't have ID on it, we only hold them for three days before we place them up for adoption. There's a pretty short window there. Deceased animal removal disposal, currently it's $15. This is charged for animals removed from private property. Domestic animals are cremated at an area facility. What we're proposing is $75 for a domestic animal. That is what this company charges us to dispose of the animals. This will just cover our costs. And then $25 for wildlife.
So I got a, I got a question about the wildlife part of it. So if, if, and I, and this actually happened. We had, we have like an arbor thing in the back end of our pool. A possum crawled up in there and just died. I'm not going to reach up there and try to pull that dead possum out. So if a varmint like that.
If you're willing to pay the $25 fee, we'll come out and remove it. Otherwise, it's private property. It's responsibility of the property owner, within the city ordinance.
People normally do if they do it themselves, where are they putting it?
In the trash. It's honestly, it's no different than if you threw a steak or chicken away. It's just a steak or chicken with fur on it.
Just like stream puts it trash.
Goes to landfill.
I guess that's one way to look at it. You know, some people are concerned about smell and they don't want that. And they're willing to pay the $25 and we'll come out. But that $25 covers my cost to get it, to store it, and then take it to a facility to be destroyed.
Put it on the curb and left bolses.
Oh, John. I'm going to be sick.
They worked them without the bolts.
Quick, quick. All right, our euthanasia, excuse me.
If my, if my dog dies, can I throw him in the trash too?
Yeah, sure. Really big chicken.
Just a furry steak.
Yeah.
I was just curious, I'm sure people would do.
So euthanasia, currently, there's no listed fee for that. However, a surrender fee and a deceased animal removal fee were charged if that was to happen. Animal ownership must be surrendered to the city before we can euthanize an animal. Ordinance requires private means not be readily available, such as an emergency field situation. So basically, what that means is the way ordinance is written is you can't call me up and go, hey, my dog is old, it's time to be put down. That's not a service that we provide. When people call me and ask me that, it's, sorry, we don't provide that service. You need to contact a veterinarian. But this is, what this covers is something crazy, something where those private means aren't readily available, the animal is suffering and dying, it needs to be euthanized. They surrender it, we have, we need a fee for that and we can take care of it. Proposed would be no change. Proposed is actually surrender fee plus deceased animal disposal fee. And that is on the chart.
And you charge, I mean, does Animal Medical Center, do they do euthanasia for us?
No, I am a certified euthanasia technician. I provide euthanasia services for the city.
Can I give you a name of some? Oh, it's just the animals. I have a list.
You're on a hot mic, Ben.
It's okay. I got 35 days.
The excess animal permit, currently it's $50 per permit, and that's annually. Requires, required for up to eight or more domestic animals. A property inspection is done by myself before the permit is issued to check for health and safety factors. We don't currently have any permits issued and I've only ever issued one in eight years. So we're not proposing a change to this fee.
Does that say there's just nobody in the city that has more than eight animals right now?
So the old ordinance was four cats or four dogs. And the previous person that had it had five dogs, so they required. With the new ordinance, it just says eight domestic animals. So I wouldn't say, I don't know. Either people don't know or I'm just not finding out if they have more than what's required. So instead of only ever doing one. Exotic animal registration, $50 registration annually. It's going to be very similar to the excess animal permit. It requires me to go out and do an inspection, make sure everything is, is what it needs to be, health and safety factors. I've never issued one of these. Never had anyone call me and say, I need an exotic animal permit.
I'm just going to ask, exotic is, chickens, for example, are they considered domesticated?
They're considered fowl. They're under the livestock category. So again, no proposed changes.
What would exotic be, snake?
So our current ordinance, the way it's defined, basically, if it's not defined as domestic, fowl, livestock, exotic's kind of the catch-all category.
Okay.
Dangerous dog registration, currently there was no fee listed. Required when a dog is deemed dangerous by the Dangerous Dog Advisory Board. The dangerous dog definition, just to go over that, is a dog that makes an unprovoked attack on a person causing bodily injury in a place other than the dog's enclosure or makes an, makes unprovoked acts in a place other than the dog's enclosure causing a reasonable belief the dog will attack or cause bodily injury to a person. They have to provide $100,000 of liability insurance on their homeowner's statement to have a dangerous dog, and it has to be specifically for that animal. Proper security enclosure, fencing and signage as defined by ordinance. And this requires an inspection by me to go out before a permit is issued to make sure they are in compliance with state law and city ordinance. Special collar and registration tag have to be issued. What we're proposing is $100 for that fee. There's a lot of effort that has to go into this. We will purchase and provide the signage, the collars, buy time to go out and do the inspection. $100 is not unreasonable. And this will be done annually, just like any other permit.
How many are currently in place right now?
Zero. We'll never have one.
What is a dangerous dog?
So a dangerous dog, like on the previous slide, is a dog that makes an unprovoked attack on a person that causes bodily injury or would lead a reasonable person to believe that a dog would cause an attack that would cause bodily injury. And we have a dangerous dog advisory board. If a person makes a complaint or, or something happens that rises to that level, it goes before the board and the board makes a decision on whether to deem the animal dangerous or not.
So it doesn't go to breed particularly?
No. Texas has a law that prohibits any municipalities from making breed-specific laws.
We actually met on dangerous dog, what, six months ago?
Yes.
And that dog got transferred out of the city instead of going to all these regulations.
Yes, we were going to deem it dangerous. It actually, it actually left the country.
So somebody else's problem at that point.
Yes.
So who is the Dangerous Dog Advisory Board?
So the Dangerous Dog Advisory Board is double duty with the Animal Advisory Boards. The same people who sit on the advisory board sit on the Dangerous Dog Board.
I'm also a watchdog.
Speaking of dangerous dogs, and then there's that euthanasia.
Trap permit fee.
You remembered.
Currently, there is no permit fee listed. Permits are good for 90 days. All place traps, whether city or privately owned, must have a valid trap to be placed, have a, excuse me, must have a valid trap permit displayed. Private Wildlife Control Services estimate between $212 and $274. This was from Home Advisor for our zip code. That's typically the cost for private company to come out and do what we provide. This is my single largest call load every year. This is what I spend a majority of my time doing is trap calls in handling wildlife. What we're proposing is a $100 permit fee. That permit is good for 90 days. You can see down there in 2020, I had 349 trap calls. And in 2021, I had 200.
So if I call you to come out and trap the feral cats in my neighborhood, you're going to charge me a fee?
You would have to get a permit. It'd be good for 90 days and it would cost you $100.
Who provides the trap?
So we have traps that we will loan out. Or if you go to Lowe's and purchase a trap, for us to come out and service your trap, you need a permit.
If I got a raccoon in the back of my yard, it keeps coming around, I'm going to have to pay $100 for a permit fee.
Yes, sir.
I disagree.
Mole's, you guys handle moles?
Your pests, rodents like that, squirrels, moles, bulls, rats, mice, that's a pest control company issue.
What's the most unique animal you've had to take out of a trap?
Out of a trap?
Yeah.
Small child?
No way.
Was it, no way it wasn't intentional that it was in there.
It was a, it was a big dog trap that the kid crawled in. Mom didn't know how to open it, threw her chicken in there.
Because I live, my house backs up to a railroad. And there's a green area behind my railroad, my house, between my fence and my, the railroad. And I get critters in there all the time. And most of the time, I can chase them off. But I've had a trap laid out, I've had a couple traps laid out over the years to catch invasive raccoons that come in and gnaw on my trash or my neighbor's trash. Well, guess what? It's not my fault. It's not my raccoon. I didn't feed the raccoon. The raccoon lives there, so why am I paying him? Or I got feral cats that, by the way, you still haven't taken care of in my neighborhood that run all around my neighborhood.
Where's the man that came tonight?
And those aren't my feral cats. But guess what? They come and poop in my bushes. They stir up my dog. They go to the bathroom in areas and I chase them out. Well, guess what? He's going to charge me $100 to come out and catch the feral cats. So I don't think that I should have to pay $100 to have a permit to come out and catch something that I didn't cause or create. And I don't think my neighbor should either.
To discuss this.
I'm just, I was just curious, John.
If, if you'll let me use my .38, I'll kill him.
Do you use it or not?
But then I'm in violation of city ordinances because I fired my gun in the city.
And that's his all-place trap, city or privately owned.
Correct.
So if he went to Home Depot and bought a trap and put it in his backyard and hauled off the raccoon himself.
He'd be committing a violation of state law.
By the way, I don't want to touch the trap, the raccoon. Because that raccoon can bite through the, through the trap. That's why he's here.
I'm going to, I guess, to get. Exactly.
There's a state law?
Yes, you, private citizens cannot transport irish animals or wildlife in general. It's a Class C Parks and Wildlife misdemeanor.
What'd you say?
Only if you get caught.
That's true. I mean, they walk across my front porch. Their kids got raccoons.
A fox.
At the last two weeks.
Yeah, most wildlife is.
Ring doorbell. Awesome, every night, awesome.
I've got, I've got a skunk that lives in my bushes that, I'm telling you.
It's home?
Yeah, it's his home. I'm not going out there and chase a skunk off. Okay, I will, but I'll get arrested. I'll bail you out.
I think this is going to require more discussion.
Okay.
Because we're all learning something, so we're.
Well, that's, that's the purpose of this is to.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is.
All right, owner release fees.
We watch critters in the city.
Currently, the owner release fee is $50 per animal or $50 per litter. And a litter of animals is, you know, a bunch of kittens, a bunch of puppies, as long as they're under eight weeks old. If they're older than eight weeks old, we charge per animal. This is if an owner no longer wants an animal and surrenders for adoption or euthanasia. So our proposed is, it's going to be tiered, much like our adoption. So if the animal is un-sterilized and unvaccinated, we're going to charge them $100 because it's more work we have to put into them to get them up to that standard. If they're un-sterilized but vaccinated, we'll charge 90. If they're sterilized but unvaccinated, we'll charge 60. But if they're sterilized and vaccinated, we'll charge 50, which is what we were previously charging.
Okay, I got to ask this. So if somebody turns over their, you know, turns over Ruffy to, and you want you to euthanize Ruffy for whatever reason, you're going to give Ruffy a vaccination first before you kill him?
So this is, this is for surrenders. This is what information the citizens provide. If they can prove to me that their animal is sterilized and vaccinated, I'll charge them 50. If they don't have any of that documentation, I'm going to have to do it, charge them 100.
Got you.
Okay. 2020, we had 31 owner releases and in 2021, we have 14.
Okay, so we have this fee schedule, depending on how you surrender the animal. And we have this, have an opposite fee schedule that tiered upside down for when you get the animal. But if you're, if you're sterilizing and vaccinating all these animals, then where do we have the tier structure on the adoption?
Because it's still money we have to put into it. This is not going to cover our total cost to surrender it? It's going to be some upfront from the surrender and the rest of the costs at the adoption.
Okay, so I misunderstood then. So anytime you adopt an animal from our shelter, it's going to be sterilized and vaccinated regardless?
Yes, assuming it spends enough time in the shelter. You know, if I get a Yorkie in, super desirable, I have people lining up, you know, the dates available. I hold it for my three days, someone comes forward to claim it, someone comes in at 8:00 in the morning on the dates available, I didn't have a chance to do that. So as long as the animal's in our custody long enough and I can get them on the schedule, yes.
So that's where you get the lower fee because it's not vaccinated?
For surrender.
Not viable. No, no, I'm saying the other way around for the adoption.
Yeah, so if we didn't have time to do that, we're not going to charge them for service we didn't provide.
All right, I just. All right, I just, so what happens if I come in on the fourth day to claim my Yorkie and you gave him, given him to Mike?
I'll tell you, you had luck.
Too bad.
And that's happened?
Chipped. My Yorkie is chipped.
Your Yorkie's got nothing to worry about.
So if they're chipped, you contact them with them?
Yes, and three days is only for animals that don't have identification. If they're wearing a collar or their microchip, we give you seven days.
Took all action. Guys were meeting my Yorkie. Oh, I'm using, sorry, sorry.
All right, rabies quarantine at the shelter, currently that is $17.50 per day. There is a maximum of 10 days of quarantine that are required by law. That's 10 days from the day of the bite. So if I'm not told until two or three days later, it could be eight days of quarantine, seven days of quarantine, it's 10 at the max. Quarantines are required for bites and scratches to humans. Home quarantine is allowed if an animal is not stray, is currently vaccinated against rabies, or is less than four months old. And that less from four months old is the vaccination. So the state says, once your animal's four months old, they must be vaccinated. So if your animal's less than four, you're not required to have a vaccine, you can't take that into consideration for home quarantine. All other animals require shelter, all other animals require shelter or vet quarantine? Okay, so if, if a home quarantine isn't allowed, they have to come to our facility or another licensed quarantine facility. That could be a veterinarian. Animals must be monitored twice daily for symptoms, so that's time and effort that we have to put into, plus I'm the only one who's allowed to handle them, so it's a little more of my time instead of the clinic staff. What we're proposing to go into will be $20 a day. It's a little bit up from what we're currently have, but again, this covers a little extra effort you have to go into, take care of a quarantine dog as opposed to a boarding animal. 2020, we had seven, seven quarantines at the shelter, and 2021, we had three quarantines at the shelter. Rabies specimen testing, currently it's $50 per animal, done for an animal that dies under quarantine or becomes ill. If ill, the animal is humanely euthanized. Carcass required, special preparation, packaging and shipping to a lab in Austin for testing. Specimen is submitted to the Texas Department of State Health Services, a certified laboratory for rabies diagnosis. We're not proposing a change to that fee, because $50 pretty much covers our cost for that. Rabies vaccine, currently it's $10 an animal. Only a veterinarian is legally licensed, a licensed veterinarian is the only person legally allowed to administer a rabies vaccine. I cannot, so a vet has to be involved. What we're proposing is just the actual cost, because rates change, vaccines cost different things, so just actual cost. Portotella vaccine and a flea treatment, currently it's $5 for portotella vaccine, $10 for flea treatment, just like the rabies vaccine, we're suggesting actual cost.
Provide any documentation to the, to the customer, what the actual cost is?
Yes, because we'll get a, we'll get a bill for it. Well, the services are provided by the clinic, will be billed for them, and then we'll get through them, this is what we were billed, this is what you owe us.
You won't know till I get the bill, right?
Well, when we take an animal over to be serviced by the vet, you know, when we walk out, they're gonna give us a receipt for the services. So this is just an animal, let's say I impound a dog off the street and it's just covered in fleas and ticks. I can't take that into the shelter and risk spreading it. I'm gonna walk it over and get it a treatment. I'll have a bill for that. When they come in the next day to pick it up, I'm gonna say, here's your impound, here's your boarding, and oh, we had to give them a flea treatment. Veterinary bills, same thing. Currently, it's actual cost, we're not, we're not recommending any changes to that. Treatment typically Animal Medical Center of Highland Village unless it's an emergency. And what we mean by veterinary bills is if an animal comes in with an injury or wound or something like that, we have to care for the animal to prevent unjustifiable pain and suffering until that, somebody either comes to claim it or that animal becomes ours, and then we can take further steps. But again, you know, you come in, your dog's got a gash on its neck, you come in two days later, we have to stitch it up, you're gonna get a bill for that. And I will turn it back over to Chief Sturtevant.
Go ahead and stay there, Wes, because I want you to cover the update number two. But on this first one here, so we talked about all the fees now, so now we're gonna go into the ordinance updates that we discussed. So the first ordinance update is to amend that section of the ordinance to allow a fee waiver authorization by the city manager or designee to reduce, refund or waive fees, similar to what is in the city parks waiver authorization. It's the section of the current city ordinance. You would go ahead and go to the next page. So this is what the update would look like. It would change this section here to say the city manager or designee is authorized to reduce, refund or waive any fees under this chapter when such action is necessary or in the best interest of the city of Highland Village. So that way, we're talking about if all of our surrounding cities are waiving their adoption. I don't know if you saw in Louisville, they have a big board, electronic multi-board in Louisville, saying that the animal shelters on sale and free adoptions. For us to, you know, help move our animals quickly rather than keep them in the kennel forever, it really does help us sometimes to have low or no-cost adoptions. This ordinance would allow the city manager to, or designee, to make that decision whether a fee should be waived during a certain period of time or whatever. That way, we wouldn't have to go back to council each time to pass a resolution to make that change.
You remember that?
Oh, yeah.
But this one's kind of technical, so I'm gonna let Wes do this.
All right, so we changed our chicken ordinance back in September. Going through them again, some language needed to be changed, so we wanted to update section 4.05.05, keeping of chickens and roosters. We want to change it to keeping of fowl. So fowl is a legal term. It's defined, and it defines five or six species of animal, of birds specifically. We want, so ducks, someone's keeping ducks. We don't want them to look at this and go, well, this only applies to chickens and roosters. It applies to fowl, duck is a fowl, you have to, you fall within this category. Change all references from bird to fowl. So as you can see, a little lower down, it said birds, we want to change that to fowl. Birds is all-encompassing. That's bald eagles, that's ostriches, we don't want that. We're talking about fowl. So any reference to bird, we want to change to fowl. As a continuation, so, number two, all fowl must be contained in a coop, cage or pen at all times located not less than 50 feet from an adjacent residential structure. What we propose to add is unless prior permission is granted in writing by the affected adjacent property owner. So you could have two property owners that don't mind a coop being built right up against a fence line if it's closer than 50. If the person wants to build it there and can get permission from their neighbor to have it built, we should have an exception there to allow them to do that.
Question on that, sorry, interrupt. What happens when the neighbors sell their house and somebody new moves in? Do they have to go get that permission again?
Correct.
Or risk losing their coop?
Yes, and, and we will provide you, this is rough draft, we'll provide you a later time, but we have language in there for what happens when a person moves out or abandons a property. There's a whole process they need to go through again.
And obviously, depending on how we want to approach it, that will require Mr. Barfita to make sure we have proper wording in there, the legal language, to make sure it's done right. We're just kind of talking in generalities here on the language. We know it's probably not anywhere near what it needs to be, but it's a starting.
And then, second question for me. It says not, located not less than 50 feet from an adjacent residential structure. Is that your own structure, or is that your neighbor's?
Adjacent residential structure, so that would be outside of their property.
I didn't know if the coop was the residential structure and the house that you live in is the adjacent residential.
No.
Okay.
So it could be 50 feet from your own place? It could be right up against your, your own walls.
Just your neighbor's?
Yeah. And then three and four, those are just, you know, again, striking birds and putting fowl in.
I'm sorry, can you go back real quick? I keep seeing one acre, and then I see 10,000 square feet, so can you just explain the difference quickly on what you can keep on an acre versus what I can keep on 10,000 square feet?
So anyone who has at least 10,000 square feet may have between two and 20 birds. You have an acre, you're allowed many as you want with an excess permit. So, and then any residence under 10,000 is allowed up to two.
Thank you.
But no roosters under an acre?
Correct.
No roosters.
And only.
Only have one.
One rooster. Even if you've got 50 acres, one rooster.
Lucky guy.
You can still hear them.
So this larger section here is just, to your question, an expansion on, so unless prior permission is granted in writing by affected adjacent property owner, the affected adjacent property owners may rescind permission, rescind permission by providing 30-day written notice, after which the fowl permit will expire. Fowl permits will expire 30 days after change in ownership of an affected adjacent property owner. Again, this is kind of rough draft, this is not the final language, this is just to convey an idea.
This kind of wraps it up here, summarize what we presented. We're recommending the city master fee schedule be updated to include the animal service fees. And the ordinance update, number one, be approved to allow the city manager or designee to reduce, refund or waive any animal service fees if it's deemed in the best interest of the city. And then the ordinance update, number two, we're recommending changing the chicken and roosters to fowl and allow for the effective neighbor permission exception.
Mark, would there be a corresponding definition to fowl? So we know it's chickens, ducks?
Yes, the fowl is already defined in the definition section of the ordinance.
I think, okay, John.
Another question. How is money transacted? Do you have, in your office over there, ability to take a credit card, debit card?
Yes, I can take a credit card.
Okay.
Or a debit card. We don't do cash or check. If they want to do that, I give an invoice and send them down to city, you want to make payment.
And it's all done with you?
Yes.
And go anywhere else that I'm allowed?
You take payments out of the shelter.
What is the kennel capacity, and if it ever overloads, do y'all have a agreement within local, like Louisville, or another service that takes over?
Our kennel capacity, we have 10 dog kennels and 14 cat kennels. Never been over capacity.
So I think, based on just discussion earlier, that there might need to be more discussion, I think updating the, the language, if you go back to that last slide, that, that bottom half, the ordinance language, and both of those, but I think the master fee schedule, council, it kind of sounded like council wanted more, a little more discussion, maybe.
Well, it's not on the, on the action agenda, so we've got opportunity there.
Right, so they just, I think maybe just furnish them some more information. You guys jump in there, what are, what are you looking for?
The only, after hearing what his costs are, I kind of pulled back on my thoughts on the adoption fee. I think you're, you're covering your cost and you're, and you're getting back to what, let's say, market should be. The, the only one that I hold true on is paying $100 for the permit to have them come in with a trap. That's my big one.
And the reason for that is because of state law, the, the permit fee for the trap?
Yeah, it's, it's paying either, or really, whether it's our trap or a private trap, you're, you're paying for my time.
To come get it.
To come out and service that trap. And we know permit's good for 90 days, I mean, you can call me a hundred times, and it's just that one fee.
Still disagree. I have a coyote that comes onto my property, we have coyotes back there, and, I'm sorry, eats my dog. Okay, well, coyote's eating.
Should be eating your cats.
I don't have a cat. So where I'm going with this is I don't believe that our citizens should have to pay a fee for the traps out there.
I can, I can see some, I can see some blowback on that, so at the very least, there needs to be definitely some messaging.
Yeah, absolutely. So, but I, I think what I'm understanding is you'll bring the trap out, but you're not gonna set the trap up and bait the trap, and you're just gonna bring it to the resident, to the residence, and you're gonna, and then, for 90 days, and then, once something is trapped, you're gonna come pick it up and dispose of.
Yes.
And bring the trap back.
And what you're, what the permit fee is for is not necessarily, again, for me bringing you the trap, because you can go get your own trap. What the fee is for is for my time, and however many times you call me up to come handle that situation.
And how often does that happen?
It's, again, the number one most thing that I do.
And what is, what do you track most?
It's a variety of wildlife, so you've got, you know, raccoons, you've got possums, armadillos, squirrels, feral cats is a big one, we started TNR, so I'm, I'm starting to trap a lot of those now, but it just depends.
What about skunks?
Skunks, we no longer do. So that was passed by city ordinance, that's a pest issue, it's a private person responsibility.
We didn't create the problem. Our citizens did not create the problem.
So Tom, what's the solution? What's the alternative?
We pay him to do it.
John, I guess that's where my question comes, is I keep hearing it's paying for my time to come out, but he's a part of the budget already. Well. As an operating expense.
I understand that, but that's the same argument I would have, was saying paying the city for a permit and plan review, right? I have to pay for plan review to get a permit from the city? Well, we're already paying them to work at the city, so why is that different, though?
All right, it's totally different, because you're playing, you're paying for a plan review to do something to your structure, to your house. That is a conscious decision that you.
You're calling for a trap to be placed out there.
But I didn't create the animal. I didn't, I didn't create the raccoon coming in.
Okay, to Robert's point, though, he didn't plan for his water heater to blow up, but you still gotta get a permit for somebody to come replace it.
I mean, there's plenty of things we have to pay fees for that I think should be, you know, pro bono by the city, but that's not how it works.
We can agree to disagree.
Let me give you a perspective on fee versus costs. The average, roughly $1,700 a year in fees collected. The line item for the animal care is average is between 50 and 55. It does not include Wes's salary, it does not include overhead, it does not include that new animal control vehicle we just purchased. So there's quite a difference. I mean, we, we don't really expect it to be cost recovery, but again, that's a perspective that we do have some real costs.
Ken, I know where you can find a million dollars that's going out the door for no service whatsoever.
Stay on, stay on topic.
I'm adamant about it, so I only have one vote.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Would it make a difference on the trap fee, if there's a fee only charged if it's our trap rather than the resident's trap?
Well, let me ask a question, so if he has to come out and pick up an animal, do they also get charged the deceased animal removal?
Yeah.
Separate, right?
Yeah. Yeah, which I have an issue with.
So, I mean, so if it's a personal trap, but we're asking the city to come and pick it up, we would be subject to the fact that it's in a trap that the private owner bought themselves, I would see a problem with charging a fee for that, but if it's a city-provided trap and the city is disposing of the dead animal, then, I mean, there should be a fee for that.
Well, I have a trouble, it's the scenario I laid out, you know, a possum comes and jumps in my saltwater pool and drowns. I didn't invite him to come swim in my pool, so I.
Scoop it up, put it in a bag, and beat your trash.
That's 25 bucks, wouldn't you rather just pay somebody 25 bucks to get rid of that for you than?
No. Well, in the analogy, you have the analogy.
I'll pay 25 bucks.
Is that for our citizen? You know, it gets cold outside and you have a, a sprinkler line that freezes and busts, are you gonna call the water department to come out and fix that? Yes, it's not a situation that you created.
Somewhere in the line.
No, but we just, just a sprinkler line in the ground. Sprinkle line in the ground.
Well, and where I'm going is, is I'm not.
To come into my yard.
I'm not saying that, I guess where I'm coming in from is, is we're going to get questions. And so we need to be able to answer the questions in a way that's going to both educate voters and convince them this is the right thing to do.
Can you sell the comp again for what other cities are charging for that fee?
Or traps?
Yes.
Trap permit, so Louisville has a fifty dollar deposit, and there's no fees listed for any other city. So when you remove a live animal, yellow, possum, whatever, what do you do with it? Does it go? So based on where the city is taking part in the, that it won't come back to that residence and won't interfere with it. Like if Howard picks up one of the ear, like at the city hall, they'll probably go play in the park. Okay, just.
John, you have a question?
No, I'd, I'd like to recommend that we table this.
Awesome.
Because right now, we're talking about state law.
Right, yes.
And how we want to administer, because if I set a trap, state's going to come and arrest me. I, I think we need to table that section, because we can, we need to.
Table it, it's not an action item?
It's not, I mean, it's just up for discuss, I think it needs to be brought back in the future.
Bring, bring back. I like everything that I've seen.
And can you make that after made it?
Make it to the next meeting.
I'd love to spend more time just on this piece of state law, because we get a lot of critters. You spend a lot of time, let's understand that before we.
So obviously, this has been very educational for the council as well, because we didn't have the idea that all of this was going on. So, yeah, if you, uh, if you could bring it back for, for, for.
I mean, we can change our firearm ordinance, simplify it. Yeah, two critters and.
Okay, let's move on.
Long's less than three fifty.
Also, I would like to just appreciate Wes' presentation here. In case y'all didn't know it, this week is actually, um, the National Animal Control Association is designated as the Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week.
Oh, wow.
Which happens to coincide the same week that the National Telecommunicators Appreciation Week, Dispatch. We kind of got a double appreciation week this week.
So what color stripes in the animal control flag? You know, it's, it's funny, I just saw a discussion on it this day. We got blue, we got purple, nobody can make, can make up their mind, so I'm not sure, actually.
Well, Wes, thank you so much.
We, we really do.
I'd like to say a quick thank you to Wes. In the past, I am putting up animals for adoption on the website. My brother, who lives in Midland, whose wife who just lost her yardy, saw a hairless, long-haired.
Yes.
Chihuahua that had been turned over. My brother calls me, I go get the pet, has a happy home still to today.
That's a straw man purchase, Barbara.
Can we do the same for Tom?
Ray, can I borrow your.
Wes, thank you so much. Your presentation, very educational, and, um, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Always do, so. Okay, we're ready to move on. Clarification of consent or action items on the agenda, does anybody have any questions? The presentation. No?
Very lengthy.
Yeah, no, no questions on this, very lengthy. Okay. Are we, okay, all right, well, then we adjourn, we'll, we have seven, two minutes left.
It's called to order April 12th. And time is 7:05.
Perfect, thank you Mayor Bella. So, tonight, we have Mayor for the Day Bella Orana. We'll do the proclamation in a little bit, but she is a fifth grader at Heritage Elementary. And you have been on a tour with the Fire Department and the Police Department. Did you learn anything?
Uh, yes.
They didn't ask for raises, did they?
No.
Okay, good, good. I think they've learned their lessons, so. All right, so we are going to get started with a prayer and the pledges led by Councilman Heslop.
Bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, tonight I pray for love, thanks, forgiveness for all of our folks here who live in the city, all of our public servants, our men and women in the armed forces serving around the world. I pray for forgiveness for those atrocities that have been going on in the Ukraine. I pray and I give thanks for all the great things that we have going on in our home state, our city, and in our country. Lord, please bless us all, keep us all from harm, help us do the best that we can do in every walk of our lives and truly make a difference in the world. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Tom.
Yes ma'am.
All right. So Mayor, our next thing is visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must complete a Speaker's request form and read it and turn it into the City Secretary. Do we have any? No one signed up, okay. So, Council, I would just like to go on the record, we did receive an email. We all have copies of that from Mr. Eric Britton. And his address is 123 Scenic. And he did send in an email. Is this, did he just, does he want me to read this? He wants the email read, okay. Good evening Council members, my name is Eric Britton, I live at 123 Scenic Drive. I am fortunately out of town on business. However, I would like to inform the Council of a situation me and my neighbors are currently facing. Our section of Clearwater Estates is currently having our roads replaced. Along the normal replacement, there have been several improvements specifically including a new curb at the top of Scenic Drive from approximately at 115 Scenic to 117 Scenic. Along the new curb is a new curb inlet for drainage. All this water has been directed down the hill affecting every house on the block. While we have individually brought up our concerns individually, it wasn't until the storm last week that we could see the resulting damage from the design. While we are all intelligent people and understand the construction was complete, my neighbors who have lived in the neighborhood saw more water than they had in 20-plus years. Further to the point, several inches of topsoil was eroded from multiple properties. Fences knocked over, a railroad retaining wall at my house was knocked over into pieces, and Van Weaver's house was partially flooded. Because of our concerns, we had a meeting with City Staff on Friday, both at City Hall in the morning and then properties in the afternoon. Staff noted the damage and agreed to have the engineer of record come to review the drainage. My neighbors and I further noticed by them that the 28-inch drainage pipe that has been run into 121 Scenic is not within a proper easement and that we need to discuss potential options with the city. I followed up with an email requesting that all construction stops until the engineer was able to access. In what I feel was an action of extreme bad faith, said City Staff showed up on site Monday morning with 20 construction workers and two tractors to attempt to complete the drainage ditch on 121 Scenic. In response, I contacted City Manager to help resolve the issue without further escalating tensions between staff and the neighborhood. Paul stopped construction yesterday, but sent an email this morning stating at this time the city has concluded the construction of the road and drainage infrastructure will not cease. The city will however direct the contractor to plug the new drainage infrastructure installed as part of the project essentially bringing the drainage back to pre-construction drainage conditions. The construction began again on our street, the pipe cannot be, the pipe cannot be simply dammed up as all of the new design has incorporated that drainage. Second, the city is allowing the contractor to complete non-engineered construction on our street. Third, not only, they are not, third, not only are they not allowing it, but they are directing it. This places an incredible amount of liability on the city. I thought as representatives of our city, you should be aware of what is going on and I thank you for your time. Best regards, Eric Britton. So, all right, thank you so much. Okay, so we are going to, we're going to move on and with Mayor and Council reports on items of community interest, Council, may I have anything?
Yes, Barbara. I'd like to thank the HVBA Business Association for the wonderful luncheon that they had today. And our speaker was our new superintendent Lori Rath. She is very involved. I liked the lady before I heard her speak, but now I know that our school's in the hands of a great person. So, thank you HVBA.
May I else? So I would like to recognize our dispatchers because it is National Dispatch Telecommunicators Week and our very own Animal Control Officer because as Chief Stewart pointed out in early work session, it is also National Animal Control Officers Week. So, we are very, very blessed in Highland Village to have wonderful animal control officer and dispatchers, so hats off to them. Now, we get to go down here and do this. We have a proclamation for our Mayor for the Day. I'm gonna let you hold this. They always give me this in big letters so I can see. So, whereas the City of Highland Village is served by and is proud to support the Louisville Independent School District, and whereas the City of Highland Village recognizes that current LISD students are the future leaders of our city, county, state, and nation, and whereas Heritage Elementary School has provided Highland Village students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade high-quality education, and whereas the City of Highland Village offered a Mayor for the Day opportunity to one lucky student in Heritage Elementary, it says second, but your fifth, fifth grade student Bella Orana was the successful recipient. Now therefore I, on behalf of the City Council and City Staff, Charlotte Wilcox, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby congratulate and recognize Bella Orana as the Mayor for the Day in the City of Highland Village. Congratulations Mayor.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you're fifth grade, right?
Yes.
Okay, let me see this for a second. So, would you like to say something? Huh? You can go, oh, I guess we have to have pictures, so, and then we're going to get that fixed. So, you want to hold this like that? I'm going to take pictures. Perfect, thank you. Y'all want to, Mom, Dad, y'all want to take, you want to come over here and take pictures or you want to just do across the room? It's fine. There. Thank you, all right. So if you want to say something, you can, now's your time. So before our meeting, I was asking Bella if she, what she wanted to be, we were talking about that, she wants to be President someday. Now that, I will support, all right? So you're going to call me whenever that happens? Perfect, you're going to start with Mayor and work your way up. Awesome, all right, yes. So, are we, ready to move on? Okay, so now we're going to do the consent agenda. Do you want to read that or do you want me to?
Oh, you do.
Just this section, go right ahead.
All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each Council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items.
Perfect, so the consent agenda items are number 10, consider approval of minutes for the regular City Council meeting held on March 22nd, 2022. Number 11, receive budget reports for period ending February 28th, 2022. Council? Mr. Lombardo?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda item as read.
Okay, and Mr. Heslop?
I will, motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Council, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Kerry's, did you vote for it? Eight oh, seven oh. Okay, we're going to move to the action agenda. So we're going to skip number 12 because we didn't meet in closed session. We're going to go to number 13, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2022-1293, amending the development regulations relating to the development and use of property described as the District of Highland Village located at the northwest corner intersection of Briar Hill Boulevard and FM 407. Mr. Kristen.
Thank you Mayor, Council. City has received an application for consideration to amend the PD regulations for PD 2012-1 at the district, now known as Bowery Park. This request is related to wall and window signage, adding an additional multi-tenant monument sign, relocation of two dumpsters, utilizing Building 7 site for additional parking until the time that Building 7 would be constructed, and giving the property owner the option to finish out the live-work units in Building 2, two residential, without requiring the office space. This item does require a public hearing. We want to do the public hearing and then we can have a discussion.
Public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone that wants to speak for or against this item on the agenda, come forward. No pushing or shoving. Okay, seeing none, go ahead and hit this. Public hearing is closed.
Mayor, Council, the City Attorney has drafted an ordinance for your review. If you want to go over the proposed changes, you have a rather large packet submitted with this, with the old ordinance and the proposed ordinance. However, I can go through it real quick. The signage that is requesting to be changed, the existing approved signage is 30-inch by 12-foot signage, they're requesting to increase that to a 40-inch by 12-foot signage on Exhibit 3 of your packet. And they're also adding a sign or two here in the center of that building. Exhibit number 5 shows the same thing, this 30-inch sign to increase to a 40-inch sign request on Exhibit 5. Exhibit 6, three sign changes for increasing the size and revising the 24-inch by 5-foot sign to a 30-inch by 6-foot sign on Exhibit number 6, Building 2. Exhibit number 7 is changing the signage from 30-inch to 40-inch. The additional parking where Building 7 is to be located is on the east side of the site, fronting the Briar Hill Boulevard. It's in between the two entrances. It's a grassy area now that they would like to make parking until such time that they do build Building number 7. The live-work units in Building number 2 are the, the ground level units, he wants to request making those residential units and without the required office space requirement in the ordinance. Monument sign proposed is, proposed on the western side of the property, I believe. Western side of the property along the 407 frontage. Just adjacent to the existing Whataburger site. The two dumpster relocations are on the ingress egress cross-access easement through the center of the site located on the west side, essentially at the entrance of the Bowery We did work this item with City Planning and Zoning on March 15th. And they voted to move it forward to Council with a 3-1 vote. As I said, the City Attorney has drafted an ordinance for your review. I do have the property owner here and will be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. Mr. Heslop?
Yeah, at whose request was the additional parking made? Is it the developer who's saying, hey, we need additional parking? Is it the employees? Is it the residents?
I defer to Zach.
Yes, please.
Sure, come on up here.
Taste your name for the record.
Zach Montana, I'm at 8508 Silverleaf Circle in Lantana, Texas, representing the property owner of the Bowery Park. It's at the request of essentially all of the above. So we've done a lot of retail leasing in those front three buildings over the last 12 months, and that's a common concern, is that there's just going to be run out of parking if all they have is the front of 407 and between those buildings. Then we also have three residential buildings that kind of surround that space too, that's also a little bit short on parking. So, it's already plotted to be, you know, a building. Right now it's just kind of a mowed grassy area, so we can put a fair amount of parking on there for the time being and then move forward with Building 7 if we decide to develop it.
Thank you.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yeah, with the removal of the workspace, how many more residential units are we going to have?
So the way the ordinance currently works is you're allowed to have seven, what's defined in this ordinance as live-work units. The definition is it's a residential unit with the requirement of 325 square feet of either office or retail. So the concept would be somebody comes in, they build out an apartment in the back, and then they have their boutique storefront or they have a real estate office or something in the front. So we're not looking to change the density of how many residential units we can have. We just want to-
Increase it to a full residential unit with 325 more square.
Exactly, so that way we can have more apartment units without the need of that because it's kind of a unique tenant mix. And that's why that building for the last 10 years has sat there with all that shell spaces. There's, I think there's two of them that are actually built out and the rest, they just, it's just not that interesting of a concept. But so the actual residential density won't change, it's the same.
So, yeah, don't, so I have a quick question about that. Are you going to fix those, the storefronts and close those, make it more residential? Are they going to stay glass and glass doors?
It would stay glass with glass doors, obviously to have privacy, but it would be just like the two that are right next door. And actually, one of the members on the zoning committee is one of our residents as the real estate office up front. So it'd be a very similar concept. So from Main Street, it wouldn't look any different than the others. But it would allow us to pre-build them as residential units, get them finished out, and then lease them instead of sitting around waiting for, you know, a long-term tenant to come by that wants us to build an office or something up front with a unit on the back.
So they're going to look just like the two that are-
Correct.
Okay. Dan?
So on the, I guess it's space number 110, the grassy patch, is there still a plan to build Building 7 at some point or you just don't know?
Yeah, I don't know. For us, not in the near term. I think that space is going to be better utilized as additional parking, but we've only owned it for 12 months. We've done a ton of leasing in that time, so we're kind of in the process, let's get the build-outs going, let's get everybody open. We have a restaurant coming, we have a lot of, I think, exciting things happen. So the goal is let's not make parking be an issue and have our brand-new businesses open up, and then all of a sudden we have big complaints on Google or wherever because nobody can park. And then if, you know, once we get settled, if the parking's not as utilized as we think it's going to be or we think we can move forward with Building 7 without any issues, then we can reevaluate.
Where are your residents that have pets, take their pets?
So we actually have a walking trail that's right behind our property that takes you all, I mean, all the way over to what the parks are over there, I mean, the school. And there's a fair amount of grass kind of intermittent between buildings, you know, between Building 5 and 6, there's a big concrete sidewalk that cuts through with grass on both sides. But we don't, I mean, if you go out there very often, it's not really a heavily-used piece of grass, it's just a mowed spot.
So, I have another question. If this is, if this passes, are you going to let the city use and the schools use that for overflow parking and not tow cars? Like have been in the past? Or is it still going to be posted as private parking or but vehicle we towed?
You know, we haven't evaluated that specifically. I can tell you the priority is probably going to be for our residents, whether it be the, I'm sorry, our tenants, whether it be the residential tenants or the commercial tenants. You know, we've had, we've had to enforce parking every so often because people are getting parked in reserved spots and we have to do some towing, but for the most part, we have onsite staff that's there, you know, most of them live onsite as well, so we can monitor it pretty well, but I don't want to commit to being able to-
Is your parking that, you have that big of an issue with parking?
It's getting tighter. So when we took over, the residential was about 75% leased and the commercial was 60%. We're 100% full on the apartments and we're 90% leased on the commercial. So it is, and we still have, you know, three of the six leases we've signed in the last 12 months are still in build-out. So, no, currently we don't have a big issue, but we don't want one. So it's better to kind of try to preempt some of these things.
Okay. Mr. Peaster?
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the parking again, is that, is that going to be impervious pavement or is it a gravel surface? Are you going to improve that Building 7 lot with concrete parking and striping?
The current plan is concrete and striping. Just the thought being if you do ever want to move forward with Building 7, you're going to have to have, you know, a foundation there anyways. And I don't think, you know, gravel or anything like that would match the aesthetics we're going for.
Okay, so it would be improved. And then can you generalize on the building signage itself, when certain signs are 12 feet long versus 14 feet long versus, I think some of them are even 16 feet long?
Yeah, so the length isn't necessarily changing, that's all per the current ordinance. What we're looking for is the height of the sign. It's very specific that it's- It's very specific that it's capped at 30 inches, whereas if you drive down anywhere in Highland Village, most signs are gonna be 42, 46 inches. You know, you got Solero knows right here on the corner, you got, I mean, you go look at all these signs, they're pretty tall, and that's to get your attention when you drive by. For some reason, our ordinance caps us at 30 inches, which has been a pretty big complaint from our retail tenants, because when you drive down 407, it's sometimes difficult to see. I mean, one prime example, I'm sure they hate that I use them, but B Legend. So it's 30 inches, it's not the letter height, that's the height of the sign. So if you have a logo with stacked lettering like B Legend Gaming, their lettering is very tiny, so when you drive by, you can't, you can barely read what their sign says. So that's been a big complaint. So that's why we're looking to increase it to 42. The length will be purely based on, you know, how it fits on the space aesthetically, how much room they have to work with, or how long their logo is, but we're not looking to change that.
So rather than, say, a set dimension for height and length, have we considered possibly a maximum square footage of each sign to accommodate a B Legends Gaming, more vertical stacked logo versus, I mean, it seems, they're at a disadvantage, right? Because their logo is portrait instead of landscape, right? But I didn't know if, yeah.
We could, we could run down that rabbit trail and get each individual site, their own individual signage, but, you know, then it would be tied forever to that.
Yeah, so I mean, 30 to 40 inches, you know, that's another 10 inches over 14 feet. You know, that's, I mean, those signs could get pretty big. Some of those signs are pretty clear now from the road, just driving by. I mean, B Legends might be, again, unfortunate because just the way they designed their sign perhaps, but, I mean, I don't see an issue with that, I was just curious if we considered a total square footage versus a set dimension.
We have none.
Okay. Sorry, one more question, if I can remember what it was, but I'll pass, I'm sure I'll think of it.
Mr. Heslop?
Yeah, a couple of questions more about the parking. So the original plans for the apartments was seven buildings, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So was parking not, are you telling us that there was not adequate parking if all seven buildings had been built?
You know, I wasn't involved in the, in the development, I think most people that were maybe have their own opinions on if it was done properly or not, but.
All right, what about the parking? I was over there last night, drove around. The parking where the townhouses are, that area back there, I noticed that that was sparsely filled. Is that parking totally reserved for the town, the people that live in the townhouses, or can it not be used for the apartments?
It can be used for the apartments as well.
Okay.
It's the, any of the residential, as we're trying to keep.
Okay, because there weren't a lot of cars in that parking lot. I would just, and then behind the back two buildings, there weren't a lot of cars back there. And then the third question would be, you've got covered parking provided, okay? Is there gonna be covered parking here?
There will not be covered parking. Covered parking's on a reserved basis typically for the residential units, and the goal is, just like in, you know, in your driveway, you don't want cross-traffic. So we like to have designated residential parking areas, visitor parking, and then parking for your commercial tenants.
And then to Robert's question about the slab, is it gonna be set where, when you build Building number 7, are you gonna have to come in and tear out that slab again and do pre-engineered, or is it gonna be built to build on top?
I would imagine you're gonna need to tear it out. I mean, you're gonna pour an 8-inch, you know, 6-inch, 8-inch slab for parking, and you're gonna, depending on how your building's designed, where your structure points are, you're gonna have to put footers in much deeper than that. So, yeah, that's kind of, I don't think it'd be possible to build a building foundation and then stripe it.
Okay. Anybody else? Robert, did you find your question?
I think I answered it, but I'll just ask, so, I mean, we approve this, or if we approve this tonight, comes back a second time. Any improvements that they wanna do to match this revision is still gonna have to come in front of a site plan, as part of a site plan for a new parking lot, or things like that?
They'll have to submit, they'll have to submit civil drawings in a minute.
Okay. And then I guess my other question is just on the new signage, so is this, this is applicable to all the signage, existing and future signage, right? So retroactively?
Moving forward.
B Legends can go put a bigger sign now than they have currently, right?
After the second read of the new video.
Okay, well, if and when it gets approved.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it.
Mr. Dorsky?
Just one last quick question, because I didn't, I have not been able to go whack and watch the P&amp;Z meeting, but the vote, I think, was 3 to 1. What was the one dissent? What was it for? Was there a reason given?
I believe it was the height of the signage, the 30 inches to the 40 inches. I think possibly encroaching and opening a door to 50 inches or 60 inches in the future, but I think the counterargument to that, not to preempt it, was, you know, if that does come back for 50 inches, then we can always just say no, right? So, sorry, that was, that was what I heard from the meeting. That's what I wanted to know.
That's correct, I was at the meeting.
Okay. All right, council, anybody else have any questions? Does anybody, is your light still on, or is your?
I am done with questions, I was gonna make a motion.
Okay. Please.
I would like to make a motion that we approve. Would we approve it? We would approve ordinance 2022-1293 as proposed in the revised ordinance. Second.
All right, council, motion and a second. Dan, second, and anybody else? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's, 7-0, 8-0, did you vote? Perfect. My goodness. Now we have to file the agenda. Okay. So we're gonna move to number 14. Status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Council, does anyone have anything? Okay, are there any updates? Anybody?
I do, yeah. I guess just the question on the visitor's comment that we received, what's the plan going forward on this issue?
Scott and I have met quite a bit yesterday and today going forward. Of course, the rain that we got, we got a heavy concentration of rain in a short time period, and it's always easy to say, "Well, that caused it." I don't believe that's the case. There's a few things to work out, some things to clarify with the homeowners, and it may require a couple of meetings with them going forward, but we will be working to get that done.
Do we have any, any indication of what kind of year storm that was that we had? What it would be classified as? It's more than a 100-year storm, for sure.
Over 3 inches and a rain gauge in 30 minutes.
Yeah.
They didn't have a rain gauge.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Mayor, you have anything? Hey, well, then you can hit the gentleman and say this meeting is adjourned.
This meeting is adjourned.
At 8:00, oh, yeah, 7:40.
At 7:40.
Okay.